I believe we've got four members now, so we can, we do have quorum, we can start.
We've got me, John, Bob Weiner and Chris Cloud, right?
Correct.
That's all we've got.
That is it.
That's the bare minimum in my, to my recollection, that is the bare minimum.
It is the bare minimum, it'll also require unanimous vote on all applications.
All right, it is by my watch and my phone after seven o'clock. So why don't we get started, welcome everyone to the April, God, what is the date?
Nineteen.
April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals. Would the secretary read the notice for the record, please?
Yes, I will, Mr. Chairman. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on Tuesday, April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven o'clock P M. On the following application. Applications. Jack Kemper, application for variance to reduce front yard setback from thirty feet to twenty-eight point six feet for location of precast hatchway at seven Jordan Lane, R forty C zone. Hannah Walzak, application for variance to locate accessory structure in other than required yard at three Lincoln Street, R nine L G zone. Joshua Sidoti, application to modify existing variance to enclose previously approved carport with two feet side yard setback, eight Lincoln Street, R nine L G zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the town of Farmington's website at W W W dot Farmington hyphen C T dot org backslash about hyphen Farmington backslash calendar hyphen meetings. A copy of this proposal is available online at W W W dot Farmington hyphen C T dot org backslash government backslash zoning hyphen board hyphen of hyphen appeals or by calling the planning department at Farmington Town Hall at eight six zero six seven five twenty-three twenty-five. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals, Kerry Callahan, Chairman.
Thank you, John. The first item on this evening's agenda. Uh, let's see if I'm, if I've got it right. Bob, Bob Weiner is appointed alternate for all three matters, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda is Jack Kemper, application for a variance to reduce the front yard setback from thirty to twenty-eight point six feet at seven Jordan Lane. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, good evening, Jack Kemper, Kemper Associates Architects. I'm here with Judy and Julian Ford, the homeowners, and Dave Whitney, our civil engineer. To talk about this application. Approximately three years ago, we went for a, a, a special permit to do an addition to the house because it was over the square footage limit. We've did that, all the complicated stuff, all the addition went in like clockwork. The additions, there's in addition to the north of the house and in addition to the east, southeast of the house. Everything went well, we had it all staked and all, all done right. During construction, the builder changed the, 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 the hatchway. No one caught it. We caught this, um, this, this, um, this, um, overage. When we had the, um, the construction or the as-built done for, for the, for the foundation. Basically, the hatchway is one foot four over the front setback. A couple of things, there's the, the geometry of the lot is, you know, not normal. The, the house, Shannon, if you go to the thing that Dave did, and Dave can talk about this too, if, if, if he wants, is the oh, that, that's, that's, that's mine, where we, I'm just pointing out on that. Well, we'll go to Dave's things first, I think, the, the other lots. Yeah, this is the approved site plan that we, we got when we did the addition. And so you could see the originally, the hatchway was supposed to be inside to make it nicer and easier to use. Really without going through us or anyone, the, the builder extended the hatchway. As a result, it went over, you can see it's kind of go, going right into the, to the corner. This lot on Jordan Lane is a development called Williamsburg is by far the smallest lot. It's, it's generally about a hundred foot less deep than all the other lots around there. And I think we have something that points that out, Shannon, in, in this package. Yeah, yeah, that, that one.
Yeah, Garrett's, Garrett's driving tonight, Jack.
Oh, Garrett, oh, sorry, sorry.
We're letting, that's okay, I'm, I'm here, but Garrett will be taking over for Z B A, so he's, he's driving.
Okay, no problem. So you could see the, the lot, as Dave points out, is just quite a bit smaller and has a very unique geometry to it, which led us to, you know, be so careful with the, the main part of the addition. We've talked to contractors before we made this application. We talked to a contractor about changing it, possibly moving it, and both of them said, get the variance, because it's just would compromise the foundation, compromise all the drainage that Dave has designed to go around the house and it's working well, and so that's, that's why we're here. This is the first time in thirty-six years that I've been on a variance where it's already in, so I'm, you know, this is a little bit new water for me. We do that before it's done. So, but what's done is done. We would, we would like to not compromise the foundation by working on it, so that's, that's our, our thing. If Dave has anything to add, or anybody? We're available for questions.
Do any of the members of the commission have questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Let's go in, oh, we should do this in order.
Kerry, do you want us to run through everybody?
Yes, please do.
Yep, absolutely, no problem. Commissioner Schoenhorn, do you have questions?
Yes, so as I, as I, as I understand the application, your contractor screwed up, is that basically my understanding of what you're claiming here?
Correct.
Because as I look at the, one of the exhibits that was submitted included a March nineteenth, two thousand eighteen letter from the Planning and Zoning Commission approving the special permit for excess of thirty percent. And it shows that the proposed hatchway is, was parallel to the proposed addition rather than perpendicular, is that correct?
Yes.
And I did go out there and, and I submitted some pictures for the benefit of the commission. And if I could just ask somebody to put those up. So this is that picture, which is, um, I don't know if it's ident, oh, I don't know if it's identified by a specific exhibit, but that's showing the, um, it's one of these bulkhead prefab bulkheads that's on the side there, correct?
Yes.
And that's already in, it was put in in contra, uh, contravention of what your plan said, right?
Correct.
All right, and I know when I was out there, there's this, um, kind of stone, uh, I don't know if you're, if they're putting in some kind of a duck pond or a, or some kind of fountain, but there's a lot of riprap uh, for water runoff there, and is that, was that for landscaping purposes?
Dave, do you want to answer that?
Um, yes, I will, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, for, for the record, Dave Whitney, I was the engineer. Because of the, the requirements for the M S four program, where we could not tie directly into the storm drainage in the street, we came up with this system of swales and culverts and a small detention basin so that the water would not directly discharge to the storm drainage system, and that's what the the, the program requires. So it was a, it was a, it was a carefully thought out, excuse me, thought out plan. And the hatchway, as it's currently constructed, does not interfere with the drainage on this site. I don't know if I answered the question.
It, it, it does, but I assume that if the hatchway had been built parallel, it wouldn't have interfered with the drainage either, is that correct?
That's correct. My, my assumption is that, I, I don't know for a fact, but most hatchways are constructed perpendicular to the foundation, so people can walk right down and straight into the basement. And I'm not sure the contractor was as careful as he should have been looking at the plan, and he constructed the hatchway in a more conventional, um, style.
Well, and I don't know who should answer this question, but I want to tell you my concern. There is a Connecticut appellate court case called Morikawa, M O R I K A W A versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Weston. It's a two thousand eleven appellate court decision. And for those lawyers that are interested, it's at one twenty-six Connecticut appellate four hundred. I'm going to read from that case, and I'm going to ask whoever from the applicant wants to respond because I'm concerned about this. It says this. We are persuade persuaded that errors made by the architect and or general contractor in the construction of the defendant's home do not constitute a voluntary act by one other than the one whom the variance will benefit. Rather, we conclude that the errors of the architect and or general contractor that resulted in the roof, in this case, it was a roof that was a few feet high, higher than it should have been, are attributable to the defendants, that is, the homeowners, because the voluntary acts of those persons were on behalf of the ones whom the variance would benefit. Thus, the hardship claimed is self-created. Moreover, although we can appreciate the plight of the defendants who relied on the work of the professionals that they hired, we have stated that personal hardships, regardless of how compelling or how far beyond the control of the individual applicant do not provide sufficient grounds for the granting of a variance. The basic zoning principle that zoning regulations must direct, directly affect land, not the owners of land, limits the ability of zoning boards to act for personal rather than principled reasons, particularly in the context of variances. Because the defendant's hardship was self-recreated, the board was without the authority to grant the variance sought. So, um, I understand it's only a foot and a half, but would you at least respond to that? Because I'm having difficulty based on that case telling me that these kind of errors cannot be the basis for a variance. What can you say to assuage my concerns?
Well, I'll start as Jack. First of all, I'm not an attorney, so I'm just going to say that the contractor is no longer involved with the project for reasons we don't need to go into. Really, what, what happens here, there's really kind of nowhere else for it to go anyway, um, you know, besides being in, in the front of the house. And I think the, the main concern is blocking up and, and, and changing the foundation, changing all the grades and everything that's been done to, to make, make this whole lot work.
I mean,
that's all the questions I have.
If, if I could just add a, a comment, I mean, we don't live in a perfect world, and who among us hasn't made a mistake occasionally? I, I don't know if Jack mentioned it, but I believe that there are letters from the adjacent budding properties, the neighbors, that had, that say they have no objection to, to the granting of this variance. It's, it's of such a minor nature. Who's being harmed and to repair it would be a horrific mess and expense? And it could be done, but is it absolutely necessary?
Well, I'm just going to say one last thing in light of what you just said, if I may. The case then goes on to say, the, in this case, the homeowners asked this court to recognize a quote de minimis, unquote, deviation exception that would obviate the need for the owners, homeowners to prove hardship. We decline to do so. The authority of a zoning board of appeals to grant a variance is controlled by statute and section eight dash six subsection A three does not allow a variance unless the applicant proves that there is an exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship. So my concern is, you know, I happen to be a lawyer. I read that to say that I'm actually, it would be unlawful to take the small amount, and I, and I respect and, and I'm concerned, and I and I do feel for the, the homeowners here about this, but I, I don't see how the fact that it's a small mistake should matter in light of the fact that it was, that the original plan approved by the, by the Planning and Zoning Commission four years ago showed that it was correctly laid out and didn't require a variance. That's my only concern as I'm expressing, thank you.
Commissioner Cloud? Do you have any questions or comments?
I do, briefly, and the architect, I think, answered my initial question, which is who is harmed by this? I mean, I'm compelled to hear that, or pleased to hear at least, that the neighbors, you know, are in agreement with the addition. Somebody made the comment about mistakes, I understand. Attorney Schoenhorn's concern about precedent here, but at the end of the day, we're talking, I imagine, what, one, one point, uh, one, one foot and four inches, is that correct? Am I to understand that? So sixteen inches over?
Yeah.
Correct.
The total of two square feet.
It looks too, if I can jump in, it looks too like the, the slight infringement is only one corner. It's a little triangle, triangle, is that, is that of the, the, the trapdoor itself or the concrete base surrounding it?
That's probably the base, Kevin measured.
It looks like, okay, thank you. I've covered my questions, Commissioner Cloud, are you all set?
I am.
Commissioner Weiner?
Uh, yes, thank you. One question, uh, Jack, if I understood you correctly, you, you said that the unusual configuration of this lot contributed to the need for the variance. Could you, could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, it, yes, thanks, Bob. The, the lot is quite a bit less deep and the angle that the house sits on the lot has pointed toward the front. It also, the cul-de-sac, um, there's a cul-de-sac there, and I think the pictures, if you, if you go Garrett to my plan that I marked up in red. Yeah, there's, there's a cul-de-sac that, that's in front of it, that's kind of pushing the, the front lawn, I, I'm pointing with my, my pen at the iPad, that's doing no good, by the way. The, yeah, that cul-de-sac kind of is what's pushing the, the front yard toward, toward the back and to the point. I think there's, um, if, if you go to the larger, um, the, the plan shows the whole development.
The assessors plan, Jack?
The one we marked up, I think.
That one.
That one.
Yeah. So you could see the, the cul-de-sac is actually kind of, I think, a little past there.
And it's, the cul-de-sac is opposite this lot. It's, it's, there's a temporary easement on the two lots across the street. So it's across from the lot. One of the requirements or one of the questions in the Z B A application has to do with what uh, unique characteristics, uh, the, the subject site have. And you can see from the configuration here that the seven Jordan Lane is a, is a pie-shaped lot, and all the other lots in the neighborhood are elongated, they're not exact rectangles, but they're much more rectangular and much deeper. So the, i- if, it's my thought that if we had come to the Z B A before this happened and we asked for a one point three foot variance, it would have been a very reasonable request to be granted because the lot is so small and so shallow, and it's such a minor request that I, I think the Z B A would have granted it had the circumstances not happened the way they did. But, but the lot is definitely unique to the neighborhood in terms of its configuration.
That, that, of course, is what I was getting at. Not sure that it's, that it's unique exactly, but it is unusual. And, and, and you're telling us that it is the unusual aspects of this lot that require the need for a variance here. That, that, the fact that the contractor messed up.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I, nothing further, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. At this point, we, I have seen for the record, and I, I don't remember all the names, Shannon, but we do have correspondence from all, I believe, all of the abutting property owners supporting the application.
Correct.
That's from Kelly and John Giamalis.
Yep.
Barry and Teresa Luke. And Angelina and Patrick. I don't know what their last names are, but.
Oh, Senakas, I know those two, yep. They're both neurosurgeons.
Okay, now, that being said, I, again, because we are in a public meeting, is there anyone who wishes to speak further in favor of the application? Is there one, one, sorry, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application?
All right, we're just, we'll ask one more time, if you've called in for the Zoom meeting, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to let us know that you'd like to make comment on the application, and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Right, Mr. Chair, there is no one with their hands raised.
Yeah, I don't see any hands being raised. I think just because of the way things are tonight, is there anything problematic about our proceeding to close each hearing and then vote on each agenda item separately?
Uh, no.
I don't think, I think that's the way we've done it in the past, anyway.
So we, so, yeah, I honestly don't remember, so you're, you're saying hear all the hearings and then go back and discuss them and vote at the end.
No, I'm saying do, do them one at a time, close the hearing as to app, to item number one, have discussion, motion, vote.
Yes, I would agree.
Okay, let's do it that way. Having heard from the applicant and having heard no opposition.
Excuse me, though, that, Jack Kemper, one more thing I wanted to mention is that, that we are, uh, we're proposing to screen this, and that showed on my, my plan. There's, obviously, you can see in the picture, a great picture, thank you, the that, that there already is screening behind it, and what we're proposing is to add some screening in front of the, um, the cellar door also, it's the same kind of, uh, evergreen planting.
Okay, thank you, you got it in just under the wire.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll close the hearing on the first agenda item for today's meeting, and I think we should go in order again, the same as we did. Any comments before we have a mo, well, actually, may I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
You know what, I'll make the motion, I'll make a motion for the approval of the variance to reduce the front yard setback from thirty feet to twenty-eight point six feet for the location of a precast hatchway at seven Jordan Lane, R forty C zone.
Second.
Second, who's the second?
Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Any discussion, Commissioner Schoenhorn, other than what we've already talked about?
Um, no, and I'm, I'm gonna, because of how I believe that I have to interpret this application, I've expressed my concern, and I'm going to have to, and I know that the, the Fords are going to be disappointed by what I say, but I'm going to have to oppose this application for the reasons that I set forth. And based on that case, I don't think we have the authority to grant a variance on that basis. I understand it's de minimis.
Could we add anything at this point? I'm sorry, we've been on mute.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I've been trying to get in to say something, but I've been on mute.
I, I certainly object to there being anything added to the discussion at this point.
All right, um, and I understand your position, I, I don't have any further comments. Are there any further comments from either Commissioner Cloud or Commissioner Weiner?
No.
I mean, I, I would simply, you know, I, I understand, respect, appreciate Commissioner Schoenhorn's, uh, comments, and I, I'm sorry?
Who's speaking, I can't see.
I'm sorry, it's Bob Weiner.
Oh, thanks, Bob.
Okay, I, like I said, I, I respect and appreciate Commissioner Schoenhorn's comments. He raises a, a good issue. For me, the unusual characteristics of a lot override that case, so I'm not troubled by this.
I'm, I feel the same way. Commissioner Cloud, do you have any further comments?
I feel in support of this application, hundred percent.
I think we need to do a roll call vote then, Shannon, please.
Certainly, Commissioner Cloud?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Schoenhorn?
No.
Commissioner Weiner?
Aye.
And Commissioner Callahan?
Aye.
Okay, unfortunately, the motion is not going to pass because a variance requires a four, a vote of four.
Thank you.
With that, we move to the second item on the agenda, which is the application of Hannah Walzak. If I, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, for a variance to locate an accessory structure in other than the required yard at three Lincoln Street, R nine L G zone. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yeah, I'm speaking for Hannah Walzak. What's going on is that the, when we put up the shed, we thought it was okay to put it there and just didn't realize that, hey, it's over the border. And we withheld that, so it was getting cold for winter, so we just said, well, we're going to have to figure out what to do.
I, I'm sorry, excuse, excuse me, you need to, sorry, you need to introduce yourself for the record and explain how you're associated with the application, please.
Okay, I'm, I'm Richard Borick. We're partners, and, you know, we, I live here with her, and, you know, I was the one that, you know, purchased the shed and started, and built, started building it there, so.
Okay.
For Hannah and me.
That's fine, okay, and please go ahead and explain to the commission really, basically what you're asking for, where you're asking to place the shed and the the, the difficulty in placing it in a compliant location.
Okay, we're asking to put it on the side of the house. With the pictures I showed you, there's a bush there, this is a, a regular green bush that we're gonna cut down, and, uh, yep, right there, this is a regular bush, and it's gonna cut it down, dig a room out, and that's where the shed's gonna go, it's at the end of that asphalt area there. And it'll be two and a half feet from the house, you know, sort of this space between it and the house. And when you do put it there, it'll be a good five feet from the border anyway. That's the one corner, the other, the forward corner will be even farther than that away from the border. So, um, it, it's a nice level area, it's very easy to put it there with no problem. Where it's located right now is, it's very, it is somewhat level, but it's in the wrong location. If you move it ten feet towards where it belongs, because, you know, we're in, in the, that area there, it, it's, as the picture shows, it goes down on a very steep angle, as you can see. And because of that, you know, you can see And because of that, you know, you can see the angle there with the picture on the right. And because of that, when you move it over, it's literally going to be on an angle and you'd have to bring in a lot of fill. Plus, you're gonna be taking out most of the yard. There won't be much backyard at all there. It won't it won't look right or anything. You know, it's not gonna it's not gonna look good and it's just it's gonna be a problem just even trying to move it over there and all. You know, are you gonna, I don't know how we're gonna get all the fill in there in the first place. But it's this round thing. That's that's the that's the top of a propane tank underneath the ground. So really don't want to put it in that area. It's just really a problem. So putting it in the other location will be easy. We'll just take the sides down, move it over and reassemble it. It'll be done. They were quick, easy job. The ground over there is already leveled. It's already nice and level. So it won't be a problem. And Lance, who lives across the way and the man on the other side, both said, hey, it's great. It's perfect to be there. We're gonna paint it the same color as the house, so it's gonna look good and they're all happy with it. So there's no objections to moving it there from all the neighbors.
And thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners, Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Just a couple. It's my understanding you're gonna take the shed where it currently is located and physically move that, either dismantle it and reconstruct it in the area behind the paved, your driveway area. Is that correct?
Yeah, exactly. It's gonna be right, it's gonna be right the edge of that. Where that edge is, it's gonna be right behind.
Right. And and if I could just see that photograph again, that just shows the driveway. So it's gonna be just to the right of where that bush is or in that general area, correct?
Yeah, that bush is gonna be taken out. It's gonna, that's where it's gonna go right there.
All right. And and then I had submitted a, I went out and looked at the area. Just want to ask you a question. If you could show me 1289, I think, the the next image. So that that one. I note there's a conservation post on the to the right of this photograph. I assume you see it here to the right of this image. Is that? Could you just explain, is this a public or conservation right of way that goes all the way down to the next street?
Yes, it's a public right of way that walk you can walk down through here to the other street.
And and you said something about it could be in your application and it could be paved, but nobody, is there any plans to pave that into a road?
No, there's no plan to pave that at all.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Commissioner Cloud? Any questions?
Well.
I'm sorry, I'm unmuted. It seems pretty straightforward to me. I guess my only question would be what do you plan to keep and utilize the shed for? I assume no hazardous conditions or anything?
The snow blower, the rototiller I have and the lawnmower, stuff like that, just regular stuff.
Great, thank you.
And it appears that Commissioner Healy just joined.
I apologize, I didn't have to discover the panelist link, so I was on the public Zoom.
Okay, for the remaining did you, Commissioner Healy, were you logged on to the meeting at the outset of the discussion of item number two on the agenda?
That
You're cutting in and out.
I said that is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then we should then, I believe procedurally, also appoint Commissioner Healy as a second alternate, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's do that. So now we have five.
Correct.
Right. I don't have any questions regarding this application. Commissioner Weiner, do you have any?
I have one for the applicant. If I understood you correctly, you said you discussed this application with your neighbors, particularly the the one most proximate to your property?
Yeah.
Could you tell me what you've done to reach out to your neighbors and what the responses were?
Well, actually, I got two letters I brought in. I typed a letter and asked if they would approve it and both of them said, yeah, we're approving it. It's fine. They I asked them if it would be okay to put it there if they wouldn't mind looking at it there. And they both said, no, we don't have a problem with it. I told them what's going on. We're moving it because it's actually over the border of our property and it has to be moved for that reason. And they said, we don't have a problem with that. They said, you know, they said they were fine.
Okay, that's that's my only question. Thank you.
Commissioner Healy, questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Having heard from the applicant and having given the commissioners an opportunity to ask questions, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application? If so, raise your hand on the Zoom feature, please. Anything, Shannon?
No, we don't see anything.
All right, or Garrett, sorry.
That's good. We're interchangeable tonight.
Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please raise your hand on the Zoom feature. I don't see anything.
We don't see anything either.
All right. With that, the public portion of the hearing on item number two on this evening's agenda is concluded. Let's go in the same order we've been using for Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion on this application to approve the Hannah Walzak application for variance to locate accessory structure in other than required yard at three Lincoln Street in the R9 LG Zone.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Comments to Commissioner Schoenhorn?
I think this is an appropriate use of the variance. The shed was obviously built over the property line. It had to be moved anyway. The backyard is such so that it would not be conducive to allowing a shed based on the topography. Also, I did walk around the neighborhood. It will not affect, it be not, it won't be out of line with the rest of the properties in this area of Lake Garda, and therefore I think it's an appropriate application and should be approved.
Commissioner Cloud, any comments?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Weiner?
No comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Healy?
No comments. Thank you.
Maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cloud?
Aye.
Uh, sorry, Commissioner Healy?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Aye.
Commissioner Weiner?
Aye.
And Commissioner Callahan?
Aye.
Okay, that's everybody and it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The third item on this evening's agenda is Joshua Sadat, is it Sadoti?
Sadoti, yep.
Sadoti, okay. Joshua Sadoti's application to modify an existing variance to enclose a previously approved carport with a two-foot side yard setback at eight Lincoln Street, R9 LG Zone, which I am supposing is just a stone's throw from where we were on the last application. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. My name is Josh Sadoti. I'm the owner of the house. Thanks for your time tonight. I had a variance approved back in 2017 for the carport that is currently structured on my driveway. Over the years, I've kind of realized that an open structure, you know, with New England weather can be tricky, especially in the wintertime, snow and ice kind of built up in between my house and in my cars. And, you know, shoveling around a car was was pretty difficult. This past year in November, my wife and I had our first daughter and during the wintertime trying to put it into the car, we had a couple incidences with some snow and some ice in the carport, which which caused some fear. So we thought it might be a good idea to enclose the structure at this point for the safety factor of being able to have a car in the wintertime, mainly in the wintertime for safety reasons. So that way, there's no slippage when carrying our daughter to a car. It's not gonna be perfect. I understand that because, you know, I do have a walkway going to the garage. I haven't thought about putting a door into the house just yet. That is something I'm thinking about for even added safety, but that is kind of where we're at right now. The structure will not be changed widthwise, heightwise. Virtually, you know, I've had a contractor come out and take a look at it and he said we can easily just enclose it just the way it is.
All right, let's go in order again. Questions, Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Mr. Sadoti, hello. I'll just note for the record because, you know, I do try to maintain our our rules. The reasons you gave are actually personal to you and your family and are not reasons that go with the land. So let me see if I can ask you some questions that will help me support your application. Could someone put up the photographs I took a few days ago, please? So this is, Mr. Sadoti, I took these pictures a couple of days ago. You do, this is your your house, right? This is your carport, right?
Correct, yep.
And are you planning on keeping the exact same roof that includes the the gutter and the post and you you want to enclose that and have a garage door and a back door and windows in that and within the dimensions that are shown in these images?
I do, yeah. You know, I've had the garage door specialist come out already and he said there'd be no issue. You know, put in the garage door tracks the way it is right now, so that would not have to be changed. No, nothing on the structure would have to be changed at this point.
And and it's not gonna go any further towards your neighbor to the, I can't remember what direction, is the gray house, the gray blue house I see to the right here in this image. In other words, where the posts are now is going to be the extent, the width of that garage. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I did speak with her. Her only concern was if I was gonna be building up because she likes to look out her top windows from her bedroom. I said, no, that's not gonna happen. It's just gonna be enclosed just the way it is. And she said she had no problem with that. I'd be happy to get a letter from her. I was planning to. And then I realized this was a Zoom meeting. I didn't realize there's gonna be a Zoom meeting, so I kind of did not do that at this point.
All right, and and one last question. If we, when you applied for this waiver back in, I think, 2017, is there any reason that you could not have asked to have an enclosed garage instead of a carport? In other words, is this just a a variance of what you could have gotten back in 2017 or is there something different about it?
In 2017, I I did not think of it at that point. Maybe financially, that was probably the main concern at that point. I'm sure I could have asked for it then. I just did not. I just said carport because in my mind, that was the only thing I could afford at that point.
Well, fair enough, but what I'm suggesting is is that it was the same dimensions that if you had asked for a garage that was more expensive, it would have been within the same dimensions and the variance as approved then could have been, that is being that's being offered now, could have been approved back then. Is that a fair statement?
I would say so, yeah.
All right, thank you. I have no further questions.
Commissioner Cloud, questions, please, if any?
None.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weiner, questions, if any?
The original variance was 2017, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay, well, that's, if if this is a step transaction, you're very patient. I I have no questions.
All right, Commissioner Healy, any questions?
Mr. Sadoti, thank you again for your time tonight. Just for clarification, so you said you you're planning to the material that you're using to enclose, you said it's it's gonna be Trex material?
No, it'd be wood.
Wood?
Is that what you mean? Yeah, yeah, I would enclose it with a wood frame, a concrete slab. You know, I'd get rid of the rocks that are over on the left side by my foundation, so to widen it up a little bit. But there will be a concrete slab and then they'll frame it out with, I believe, wood.
Thank you. No further questions.
And I don't have any further questions. We have heard from the applicant. There is no opposition. We have a motion and the second, we have a roll call vote, please.
You want to ask for public comment first?
Yeah, public comment. We're a little ahead.
I skipped a, I skipped one, sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
Did we, I asked for any further? If anyone wants to speak in favor or against the applicant, correct, or am I mixing that?
Not for this one.
I didn't do it on this one, okay.
Now I know.
Any other person or persons who wish to speak in favor of the application? If so, raise your hand. Virtually. Anything?
Don't see anything.
All right, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Raise your hand using the Zoom feature, please. Okay, anything?
Nothing I'm seeing.
If not, we'll declare our, declare the the public portion of the hearing on item number three on this evening's agenda closed. And we can go through for Commissioner comments as in the order that we've been using. Commissioner Schoenhorn, any comments before we vote?
Mr. Mr. Chair, I think we should have a motion first before we discuss.
We should have a motion first. And may I have a motion, please, on Mr. Sadoti's application?
Mr. Chair, I would like to move that for that the that the commission approved the Joshua Sadoti application to modify the existing variance to enclose previously approved carport with two-foot side yard setback at eight Lincoln Street, R9 LG Zone.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
All right. Is it comments, Attorney Schoenhorn?
It's just a modification of the previously approved variance. It doesn't change the dimensions. And therefore, I certainly think it's appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Cloud, any comments?
No comments, sir.
Commissioner Weiner?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Healy?
No comment, thank you.
Okay, and I don't have any further comments. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schoenhorn?
Aye.
Mr. Cloud?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh? Oh, Weiner, sorry.
Aye.
Christian Healy?
Aye.
And Sharon Callahan?
Aye.
All right, I believe that concludes the items on the public hearing agenda. The next item appearing on the agenda under new business would be discussion of the bylaws. And I believe it was Commissioner Schoenhorn who proposed a bylaws change I, which I believe was intended and designed to provide that even when we go to in-person meetings again, presumably at some point on a full-time basis, that people could still participate virtually.
Yes, there are actually three proposals. Two of them were are intended to facilitate the remote applications or remote participation, even when we go back to in-person. And I read the there was some communications back and forth with our land use attorney for the board, Robert D. Crescenzo. And he did indicate, made some suggestions. And so when it comes to the the first one, it's my understanding that we need to alter it in order for it to meet the, at least the current status of the emergency pandemic regulations for public meetings and define the fact that, and let's see where I have the language. Well, let me, let me, if I may, what I would like to do is first talk about one that I think nobody objects to, and that is Article 10, Section 10, which would basically recommend that when when applicants come before the board, they submit either a copy of their construction plans and photographs. I don't mind going out and being the photographer, but I'm not necessarily gonna be doing that all the time. And I think it helps all of us to be able to picture what is being proposed and what the And I think it helps all of us to be able to picture what is being proposed and what the area is like. So it's to propose that there that and I and I put it in as a to are they're advised to submit it. I'm not making it a mandate.
Okay, that, yeah, that I think keeps it well within the scope of our authority.
The, I don't know if everyone's suddenly having their screen. Is it just me or is the screen jumping around?
Just you, just you, John.
It's just me. Okay. I don't know why my my computer is doing that, but this the the current Article ten, section six basically is obsolete. It talks about approaching the 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 table and speaking. We haven't had a table be used for the applicants in quite some time. There's a podium. So the purpose of Article ten, section six was to amend what's there now to basically give instruction that people are to approach and the either the the table or the podium in order to facilitate proper recording of comments. And they should then most of it is the same after that. I do include that if they're appearing remotely, they should announce their presence at the appropriate time by unmuting their microphone function. Again, bringing it into the age of remote hearings. The the only one where I would think we would have to make changes based on on Attorney D. Crescendo's comments has to do with the forty-eight hour suggested. The reason that I encompass that is when we go back to in-person hearings, the there was no provision that would allow someone to appear remotely, and there are people who may still feel that they cannot appear in person either because of health reasons or just to accommodate people with disabilities so they don't have to physically come into town into town hall. So the original proposal was just to alert individuals that they wanted to give wanted to appear remotely, they had to give forty-eight hours. However, as Attorney D. Crescendo pointed out, in order to convert a in-person meeting into a hybrid meeting under the emergency statutes, there has to be forty-eight hours notice from the town. So the suggestion was that I guess you need more than forty-eight hours to make the proposal. So the language that I am now suggesting, instead of it being any person who desires to address the board, that part of it, I'm changing it to, I'm proposing instead that prior to any board meeting that is scheduled to take place in person, any person who desires to address the board remotely shall provide notice to the town planning office at least three business days prior to a scheduled meeting to ensure that it can that it can be converted into a hybrid meeting and to ensure that audio and or video communication is available at such hearing. That that was the that's the amended language that I'm proposing that I think, and I don't, you know, I'm I'm open to other to hearing from other people and how they feel about making these meetings more, shall we say, user-friendly to the public. I've been watching some of the other meetings inland wetlands, the town, for example, council, for example, they're meeting in person, but they're calling it a hybrid meeting and they're having individuals wish to speak appear remotely. It could change from time to time. This is to ensure though that there is sufficient notice so that the equipment is available, someone to operate it. Those are my three proposals.
Okay, and I guess I'll take it upon myself to comment initially. I think this is, these are things that we can, we can and should start doing and thinking about. I'm a little concerned about doing this this evening for two reasons. One is personal to me in that I confess I have not had as much time as I would have liked to really consider the language, what the implications of the changes would be and how they would affect town staff in terms of providing notice and making all the arrangements for turning a in-person meeting into a hybrid. The other is that we as the zoning board of appeals, at this particular meeting, we're pretty thin. We have two alternates and three regular members. And if we are going to consider and vote upon a change of the bylaws, I'd kind of like to have a stronger showing, especially of the regular members of the ZBA. And therefore, my a thought for me is to table it till the next meeting in the hopes that we have you know, everybody has more time to consider the proposed changes and we have a a larger contingent of the commission's members. And Shannon or Garrett, what are the again, and I apologize for not having sufficient, having had sufficient time to dig into this. But what what's the is it a majority? Is it? What's the standard for passing an amendment to the commission's bylaws? Is it a simple majority vote?
I believe it is. It is. It is dedicated bylaws may be amended, sorry, here, by a two-thirds vote. So in this case, it would be four-six of the voting membership of the ZBA on a quarterly basis.
We're only five.
Yeah, I know we're only five, but so two-thirds. What it says is two-thirds. So if you had full membership, it would be four-six on a quarterly basis in January, April, July, and October. So perhaps what we can do is use May and June to tinker and finalize the wording so that it can get voted on in July. And that sets us, gives us some time to to work through some of the nuances of the wording and the requirements.
I think that would be helpful and it would also give us an opportunity to let members of the commission know, hey, we're talking about making some fundamental changes to the bylaws to bring them up to date at the July meeting and thereby encourage somewhat better attendance.
Correct, but also any final, once it would give us May and June to get a final version that we could then just quickly float by Attorney D. Crescendo prior to then a final adoption in July, which is probably prudent. But it also allow us to see if the latest the House bill is actually signed by the governor at the end of April. At this point, there's no indication that he won't. I can tell you, we are, you know, we had tried hybrid meetings last fall with moderate success. Town council and Commissioner Shoenhorn, you are correct. Town council does do a hybrid meeting, but you may note one nutmeg is there. So there's Nutmeg TV host it. So there's different technology involved to a certain extent with Nutmeg TV hosting the council chamber meetings. And their need for applicant presentation, continuous applicant presentation and continuous streaming of graphics of an applicant's presentation is distinctly different than what the land use boards need. And because of that, our IT requirements are distinctly different. So we have been working with our IT department for the last six weeks. We tried it last fall, there were glitches with a few things and and everybody kind of reverted back to remote anyhow last fall. And then TPZ has expressed an interest now that some of the mandates are relaxing of coming back in person. But recognizing that we need, you know, the intent, I don't think we are ever going to get to solely in person. Town council does not want solely in person. So I think by virtue of that, the rest of the land use boards are going to follow. We will either be a completely online or there will be a hybrid provision. I don't think we are going to not for the foreseeable future, end up in a solely in-person platform for many of the reasons Commissioner Shoenhorn that you mentioned, that there are extenuating circumstances, not only for members of the public, but for members of the commissions as well. And so those accommodations need to be made for a variety of reasons. I know many of you get stuck at the office and have to take these meetings from the office and have gotten used to doing so. We need to be able to continue to to do that to a certain extent.
And and Mister Chairman and Shannon, I will note, one of my thoughts, especially with regard to section five was in the event that we were coming back, I wanted to make sure that that staff was able to do this. It's my understanding some towns claiming it's too expensive are refusing to even engage in hybrid meetings because it's costs them too much to provide either the Zoom or the video link. So I was doing this in the event that at some point, these restrictions may be lifted and the Freedom of Information Act may require at some point that we go back, at least that that the commissioners appear in person. These are still emergency regulations that the governor is going to sign. And I was hoping to have something in place before we're at the point where we're forced to make these decisions and it's to give enough time to staff to be able to make those determinations. So I could write the language that I orally stated based on Attorney D. Crescendo's proposal or or comments, send that as a revised proposed amendment so that it could be considered at a later during those.
I think I think that would be helpful and it sounds like the July meeting is the way to go.
Correct, and we'll leave it on as an agenda item for for May and June so that everyone has an opportunity to review and discuss. So I'd like to leave it on as an agenda item as a discussion matter, but not for voting. And then in July, understanding that any any comments, questions, concerns can be discussed in May and June, just like we're doing this evening with the intent that it's any changes are ready to vote in in July.
Sounds good. And the record or the minutes will reflect that that item, new business discussion of bylaws, that in fact, the discussion did take place.
Absolutely.
But there there was no motion or vote on it.
Absolutely.
Okay, moving on then.
May I? I'm sorry, Commissioner Callahan, I've got one more thing, just Commissioner Shoenhorn with respect to the the last item, Article ten and the addition of section ten. We do, so I guess I'm not sure about the pertinence of this being added to the bylaws since the applicants the applicants aren't given the bylaws. The applicants have their application form and the applicants have the regulations and what's in the zoning regulations from our requirement. I'm wondering if it might be better just to do a line item on the application form with respect to, you know, this is, and we asked for a site plan and we asked for a you know, all the documentation to support your application so that it's clear for the commission. Obviously, some folks are more astute at that than than others and we can't force someone to give us something that they don't want to give us.
If I can just respond, I then put it, it's they're advised to. I did not make it mandatory. The other thought was, I noticed a couple of of land use boards, I can't remember if it's inland wetlands, do list their bylaws on the website. And since Article ten talks about the procedure, at least those of us who are I won't say lawyers, maybe just people who are more OCD, I always look at the rules and regulations and how to proceed. And if that's a public document, then at least those who would appear would at least know what to expect. You can't force people to read these regs. But having them available maybe on our our ZBA website is very sparse. I have to say, there's almost nothing there except there are agenda and the application. So maybe a link to the bylaws wouldn't hurt. Again, it's to try and make it more user-friendly for people who may not know what to expect. And that's why I put this in here. It's just as a suggestion, if it means adding a line to the application form recommending people include that stuff, that's great. But you're right, some people are way more astute about this than others. I just thought this would at least alert people if they want to bother looking at it, that it's helpful. It is for me. That's why I go out there. I don't know if it's helpful for the other commissioners if they were unable to do a site check to look at those pictures.
Certainly.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Do I correctly understand? We're not going to be taking any further actions at tonight's.
Yes, and I I understand, Bob, that you had some time constraints this evening, correct?
I've got some people waiting for me, so if it's all right, I will jump off now.
I believe it is. We can take care of the last items. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Take care, Bob.
So long. Thank you all.
Thanks, Bob.
Sorry, sorry, Mister Chair. Thank you for indulging me. I wanted to clarify that matter. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. We are moving on. I believe the last thing we need is a motion to approve the minutes of the January eighteen, two thousand
Yeah, it should be twenty-two.
Jen, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the January eighteen, two thousand twenty-two zoning board of appeals regular meeting and administrative meeting. May we have such a motion, please?
Mister Chairman, I will make that motion with the one typographical error correction about halfway down on the first page where the line begins with the word pool, the next word should be will and not with. I don't know if everyone has or those that, yeah, right, right there, the word where the cursor is.
Will not extend. I think you're right.
Will not, right.
Mister Chair, I will second Commissioner Shoenhorn's motion as amended.
Okay, thanks, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I think that covers it.
Now, there's an administrative minutes as well.
I know, I included that in my request for a motion.
Oh, well, there's a
Motion itself.
All right, because there is one correction I want to make in that as well.
All right, now then is there a separate motion to approve the administrative portion of the minutes of the January eighteen, two thousand twenty-two zoning board of appeals hearing?
I'll make that motion with the correction that in the very last sentence before the where it says the meeting adjourned, the word April should be added, that the board can consider changes again in it says July and October, but it's April, July and October, which is in fact what we did this month.
duly noted. Thank you.
And may we have a second of that motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, with that, I believe a motion to adjourn will conclude this evening's proceedings. And may I have such a motion?
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Before we adjourn, I just want to say that I do want to thank Commissioner Shoenhorn for all the work he does going out there and taking those photos because they are very helpful and, you know, so I agree with those changes when we do make them. But thank you very much, John, for your efforts.
Thanks.
You're quite welcome.
Well said. May we have a motion to adjourn? Come on, somebody, that's the easy one.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, let's go.
All right. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending.
Night, everybody, everyone.